You're live, go ahead.
All right, this meeting of the Township Preciponey Troy Hills Planning Board Monday, April 4th, 2022 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4-6 at Sec. of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. If you would call the roll, please.
Mr. DeDees.
Here.
Councilman DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Mack.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Von Aken.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have with us tonight our Board Attorney, Mr. Lagona.
If we could stand and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there anyone here that wishes to address the board on any item that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none. This meeting is open to the general public. We have no resolutions, we only have one item on the agenda. That is application number 22:510, Dan Tedesco, 179 Noel Road, Block 475, Lot 203, Zone R3, looking for a major soil moving permit to mitigate drainage issues associated with the construction of a new single-family dwelling. Are you here?
I'm here. This is the landowner, we're going to bring him up to the conference. This is Manoush Patel, from Orlando. And what we're looking to do here-
Hold on, hold on, so I'm just going to swear you in.
Sorry?
Hold on.
Oh, sorry, me.
Please raise your right hand, and if you speak into the microphone, because this is being recorded.
Okay.
You may have to turn it on.
It was on. Looks like it's on, yeah.
Yeah, just keep your voice up and your... Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address, professional address?
Daniel Tedesco, 41 Setchfield Drive, Morris Plains, New Jersey.
Mr. Tedesco, you're the contractor?
Yes, I'm the contractor.
Okay, can you please describe your relationship with the property owner and what you've been contracted to do?
Sure. So I built a new, single-family home there, 4,500 square foot home. And we had to clear a lot of trees and so forth, and move some soil to get the house built. And now we're having trouble with the neighbor property where water is running along the backyard, up to a wall, a cinder block wall that borders the property, and it leaks through there, and it leaks into their poolhouse, and their yard as well. And the property has a lot of craters in it, trees that have fallen over the years and so forth. I understand the property is used for a number of different things, and there's some trees that have fallen, some very large trees, and it created a lot of wells for water. So the water doesn't just drain, it sits there. So in order to fix that, I need to take those trees out, and then shape it, swale it around the side, and get that water to go out this far into the property. And we create a little bit of a berm along the neighbor's property, prevent that water from going over to the side.
Okay, so you have presented us with- These renderings, as it were?
Right. And if you look at that rendering, the drawing on the right, you'll see the swell, the back corner of the property, that will direct the water around, if you're looking at the front of the house, around the right side of the house, and then out towards the front, towards the street. And right by the street, there's a storm drain that the town had put in, of the purposes of water getting caught and being sent down to the storm sewer. And not much water is going there now, because a lot of it's just getting stuck in the backyard. And we're going to leave as many trees as we can, and the owner, landowner here has stated that if, I know there's some privacy concerns with the rear property, that he's losing a lot of his privacy, he's perfectly willing to put some giant pines across the back to provide privacy for himself and for the rear neighbor. And he wants to be a good neighbor, he's a great guy, he's happy to do whatever is necessary to make everybody happy. Does anybody have any questions?
How many truckloads do you expect to be moving?
We're not, really not going to take much dirt out of there.
We're just moving around.
Yeah, we may, may move maybe, you know, eight, 10 loads around. It's really, a lot of what it's going to be is moved around. We're going to take a lot of stumps out, we're going to take bits of concrete out, things that were left there. Apparently there's some road projects back in the days, there's some old concrete pipes laying back there from previous owners. So we'll get all that out, clean it all up, and get rid of the mosquito nursery that's there now, with all of those craters, the water just sits there. And then it'll be a nice flow from the front to the back.
So the swell you're creating?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I guess it is close to the property line.
Yeah.
Do you think there's, there's going to be, what kind of slope are you going to have to keep the water on your property instead of on the neighbor's?
Yeah, you got to have at least, you know, eight inches every few feet, a nice slope, and it's not going to be a sharp one, it's going to be a gradual-
Okay.
-slope, so that before the water even gets there, it's already getting coaxed to the front, and the farther it goes, the more coaxing it's going to get.
Okay, so what kind of sloopy, I'm sorry, what kind of soils are on this site?
The soil is not too bad. You go down a little bit, and it's pretty sandy, it perks really well. At the bottom of the foundation actually hit white sand, at the bottom, like each kind of sand at the bottom of it.
So you're not, you're not putting in any kind of dry well or anything to keep-
No.
-perforated to the ground?
No, it's not, it's not really necessary. The whole house that we built, we built this big house there, that's all piped to two tanks that are offset on the side of the driveway. So we're catching all that water, sending it to those two big tanks, that's the perk tanks, and then they have an overflow to the storm sewer system. So there's not a lot of water-
Those tanks percolate into the ground?
Yes.
So all the roof leaders are already going to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, two large tanks, yeah, like nine foot wide, big tanks.
And the soil you're moving in, I mean, are, well, I-
We're not really bringing any soil in, we're really just moving it around.
Yeah, according to your engineer's calculations, you're going to probably be removing about 100 cubic yards.
We're going to be moving it.
Like take, no, it's his net, he's got a net of 100 cubic yards to-
Possibly, and my only view of that is, I'm taking down a lot of trees, and I'm not leaving the stumps, I'm not burying those stumps, I'm taking them off. So after we take all those out, I don't really think there's going to be much dirt to remove from there, I think.
Okay.
The voids left by the, by the trees, we're just going to have to smooth it over. But any soil that we'd have to take out, these would be minimal, in my experience.
Any members of the board have questions of this witness at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Napolitano? Thank you. Just refresh my memory here.
Sure.
When you built, before you built the new house?
Yeah.
Was there any water issues before that?
I'm not aware of that, I didn't buy the property, he bought the property. But there, you know, the neighbors had said that there wasn't any before that, and then once we got building on the house, especially when there was no house there, and there was no leaders being piped to the tanks, they were complaining about water. So I asked them just to be patient, let's get the house up, and we get the leader drains piped to the tanks, and hopefully it would remedy the issue, but it didn't. You know, they're still seeing some water over there.
Okay, so there was no house there before?
Correct.
Or was it, something was there, you knocked it down?
It was just vacant land.
Nothing there, vacant lot.
That was just vacant land.
House goes up, and now we're having water issues-
Correct.
-around the, around the property, and neighbor's houses also.
Correct.
And you're going to try to mitigate that problem, to lead any water in the neighbor's basements?
Correct.
Wherever it's going to be in the property.
Well, it's not really in the basement, it's on their property, but yeah, yep, they have a little poolhouse there, and the water gets in there, yeah.
Nice.
So we want to smooth everything out in the backyard, and put a little bit of swell on the right side, so when the water comes across the backyard, we're going to coax it to the front of the property.
All right, direct it away from the neighbors.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Other members of the board have questions of this witness at this time?
And about how many trees have you had removing?
It looks like about 40 trees, half of which, I understand, are the variety that is getting attacked by some kind of beetles now, that would need to come down anyway. So in reality, it's about 20 trees that would normally stay there.
And I might have missed that, but, and is there a plan to replace those 40 or 20?
There's, there's no call for it on the plan, I met with Parks and Forestry, and they asked me to leave as many as I can in the back corner and along the fence line, which is what our plan is to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
And your plan would also put in other trees if there appeared to be a problem?
Absolutely. Yeah, he's more than happy to do that. We've talked about it multiple times, he's happy to put, you know, those giant pines that grow real quick, and create a nice buffer, he'd be happy to put those in.
All right.
Agreed?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other members, Mr. Mealy?
Mr. Tedesco, how many other adjoining properties are affected by this situation right now?
Affected, meaning from the drainage perspective, just one? As far, as far as it's been brought to my attention, maybe somebody else has some other concerns.
Well, wait, 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 no, we can't hear anybody out there at the moment.
Yeah, I've only had a complaint from one neighbor, so, and I've only had a complaint from one neighbor, and town engineering's only informed me of one neighbor that had any issues that I was aware of.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get around to other-
Sure.
-voices in a little bit.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With regard to the species of the trees, can we make that something that the forester provides input on?
Yeah.
I don't think there's a lot of pines in that area at this time.
Yeah, he, he already looked at it, and he said about half of them would have needed to come down anyway.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's not my, I'm not a tree guy, but yeah, he's, Parks and Forestry came by.
I think what board member is asking is, before you plant, can you confirm with the forest, the type of species?
Oh, of course, we always do. Yes, is that what you're asking me? I apologize, I apologize, yes, yeah.
Any other questions by members of the board on this?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did you have the occasion to read the February 22nd memorandum from the engineer?
Yes, I did.
There's about eight conditions, which is in line with what ordinance Section 350 requires for major soil movement.
Right.
Applications, do you have any issue complying with any of those?
No.
And you agree to comply with all of those?
None at all, yeah, we discussed it, we're all in agreement on all of it, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
All right, do you have anything else you want to say? Now, I'm going to ask the public if they have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time, that's questions only to start. If you've got commentary on the conditions, please hold that, you'll have a chance to talk about that. But if you have questions, if you could please come forward and ask your questions into the microphone here.
I can't walk so good, I'm walking loud.
Actually, we can probably bring the microphone to him.
If you could bring the microphone back to him.
Our meetings are recorded, that's why we need the microphone, so you can pick you up on a recording.
Do I have to turn it on?
Yes, please. Speak into it.
Should be on already.
Hi, my name is Warren Van Verk, I live at 149 Noel Road, which is adjacent to this property of 169 Noel Road, which is the Devens property, which is adjacent to this home. The lot that he built this home on was a contractor's lot. There was about 100 yards of dirt piled there.
Do you have, do you have a question of this?
Yes, I want to know why he, why he didn't move that dirt, why did he flatten it out and raise the grade level two feet higher than everywhere else?
Mr. Tedesco?
Right, so there was an engineering plan that was given to me for the site by an engineer, and we just followed that plan to the T. So, and town engineering came and checked the heights, and we were dead on.
I know, but the, when the project was started, the engineer, I called the engineer to say, you're raising the height of the ground, the, the people that came to survey it had to come back four times because the grade was wrong.
No.
Yes.
We didn't have to change the plan, the plan's the same plan from where we started it.
Did the surveyors have to come back and survey it three or four times?
We were asked to check it after you called engineering, we were asked to have them go out and check it, we checked the heights, and they were dead on, and then I met engineering out there, and they brought their own survey equipment and checked it themselves, and they said it matched the plan.
The contractor that was doing the digging said to me personally, something's wrong here, these cars are going to fall off a cliff here.
Excuse me, sir, this is, this is time for questions, if you have comments on what occurred, that's for later, after we've sworn you in.
All I can tell you is that with the pile of dirt there, there was a big pile of dirt there, and he put it out and built the house on top of it. Looking from the street, you can see it's on a hill. That's all I got to say. My kids are sitting long, throwing out heat.
I have a question, can I go?
If, state your name and your address, please.
Patty O'Flaherty, 169 Noel Road.
Please spell your last name.
Sure, O apostrophe, F as in Frank, L, A H E R T Y.
What, what address?
169 Noel Road.
Thank you.
You'll see it as Devens and O'Flaherty. So my question is, the level of the, where it floods right behind our poolhouse-
Yeah.
-is much lower than the street.
Right.
So when you say you're going to create a swell, how are you, and then that water's just going to flow out to the street?
Right, well, it's, the driveway's on a downhill, so that area is higher than the street level.
I'm sorry, which area is higher than the street level?
By your, like, which part, is it where your fence ends and your, the wall begins?
So where the poolhouse is, all along that cement wall, that, that level?
Yeah, as per the surveying, it's, it's higher there. From the road.
I'm not an engineer, but I find that almost impossible.
Yeah, either am I, I'm just, I just follow the plan, and the plan, the lines on the plan show that it's higher than the road. We would have pitch from the back corner around all the way to the road.
So from the back corner by Brian's fence?
Yeah, yeah.
You're going to say that, that's higher than the street?
Yes.
Like that water's going to be able to flow all the way out to the street?
That's what the plan shows me, and we're going to follow that plan to a T.
And what if it doesn't?
If we follow the plan, it will. Like, we're going to have survey equipment, and we're going to survey each point to make sure that we have pitch all the way to the street.
And there's no drainage system in terms of a, what do you call that?
Yeah, as far, looking at the plan, which, you know, we can share with you, it's showing that there's pitch, if we follow this plan, from the backyard to the street.
And are you taking down all the trees along that tree line, or along that property line?
We're going to leave, we're going to leave as many as we can, nice healthy trees that aren't that, that type that the beetles are attacking, we're going to leave as many as we can. And as I mentioned, Manoush had, saying he's more than happy to put some giant pines or something across the backyard, to provide privacy, like the Brian's property, if necessary. And he would like them himself, you know, he wouldn't mind having the privacy himself.
I wouldn't want to look at the back of my wall, anyway.
Yeah. Has character.
My name's Bob Devens, 169 Noel Road. Yeah, let me ask you a question.
Yep.
Were you ever told, ever, that that was deemed wetlands behind the house?
No.
Never, by Parks and Engineering or anybody?
No.
Said, never said, "Don't touch that, it's deemed wetland"?
No.
Okay, and you're telling the truth?
Yeah, there was-
I haven't, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, there was a, there was a, I'm not giving excuses, there was a, an area, a line of non-disturbance, and that was for aquifer, so that water could make a recharge geographer, that was, that's what that was for. Yeah.
All right, do we have other questions here?
So, I'm Brian Hockey, 220 Lancaster Drive, I backed up to the property, so, that property, that property is definitely higher than my backyard, if you're going to build a swell, how much of a, there's no way you're going to have, what, a two-foot wall of dirt behind my house?
No, it's, I'll show you the plan.
I see the plan.
Yeah, that's, if we follow that plan-
Standing my backyard, look forward, Noel Road is above Lancaster, it's-
Now, we're, we're starting almost at grade, like, if we're looking at the back of your house, left-hand side.
Right.
Just going to swell that around.
Plus it has the wetlands there that are there, and next to that, so the water that is on the other side, how is that water going to go?
That's the whole thing, we're not, we're not raising that left-hand side, we're not raising that.
No, but now the water from the left-hand side can't continue down wherever-
We're not raising it, so it won't, we're not impeding it, because we're not raising the land there. So whatever it's doing now, it's going to be able to continue to do.
So it's going to just continue through my yard and Derek's yard, because-
No, it's going to continue along the back-
That whole area that needs vet.
Yeah.
That's why the trees are dying now, because they're so wet.
Sir, sir, we've had, this will be reviewed by engineers, and if it does do exactly that, they'll have to come back and fix it. It's as simple as that.
Yes, I'm Don Hockey at 220 Lancaster Drive. Do you know the definition of wetlands?
It's not, it's not my job, I, I read the plans, and if it's designated on the plan as a wetland by a certified engineer, then steps are taken, I, it's not my, I'm just a contractor.
Has it ever been designated wetland?
Not, not to my knowledge, I was given a plan to build his house, and on that plan there was no wetlands-
Ever.
-depicted on the plan.
Does the owner have any knowledge of it being wetlands?
I, I got the plan from him, he gave it to me, he bought the property, he had the, the engineering done, and he had the architectural done, hired me to follow the engineering and architectural directions, and that's what I did.
Who would be the person to go to to find out if this is wetlands?
There was a previous engineering done when that was all subdivided, and it would have been done at that time.
Where do I find-
Prior to him purchasing it.
Where would I find those records?
I don't know, I wasn't involved in a property back then, I don't even know when that was done.
Would that be the township engineer?
The township engineer should be able to tell you whether or not it's wetland.
Does the township engineer have anything to do with this property that when it was sold?
The township engineer reviewed this, reviewed this plan and approved it.
Who is the township engineer?
Paul S. Niehoff.
It's Justin Leesa, Paul did the memo, but it's Justin Leesa.
So just for clarification, he's the one that said it was okay to build a property on this land that was wetland?
He gave it the approvals that the engineering department has to give it, which means that he did not find records that there were wetlands there.
Okay, thank you.
And just, just for clarification, wetlands are governed by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. Those maps are on file with the state, that all comes from the state. Anything that has to do with wetlands, the designated buffer areas, and disturbance, and requirements for building in those areas, is all state-controlled. So engineers, that all flows down from the state to local engineers, to licensed engineers, and they have to follow those plans, so they're-
Based on their designations already?
They're bound, they're bound at the state level, correct.
Yes, and I'm certain that the engineer reviewed-
Is there a contact for the state or this engineer that I can write a letter to, or at least notify them of how much water really is there?
You can contact the township engineer, Justin Leesa.
It's really bad water back there.
Derek Lauks, 222 Lancaster Drive. Obviously, there's a continuing issue, I understand, but the original plan that you had for site elevation?
Yeah.
Why is the house so high when you're looking, if you stand on his porch, he's already four to six feet above what it should have been?
Yeah.
And has the town come out and re-inspected to find out the height?
They did.
And?
And it was dead on, within an inch.
Within an inch?
Yep.
By the hill that's already been there?
Yep, they checked the garage floor height, which is on the original engineering plan of what the finished floor height should be in the garage, and it's dead on.
So the original plan, the town then has to take responsibility, did that, did the town miss the original site elevation?
Yeah, so, so he hired an engineer to, to create a site plan and a building envelope for the house, and then that gets approved by zoning and by town engineering, and then with, coupled with the building plan, gets submitted to the building department, which is then approved, and building department goes on the previous approvals. So that, and also Morris County Soil Conservation also comes out and looks to make sure we have this soil stabilized at the end of the project. So that's everybody that's involved, and all of those things were approved, before I even got involved. You know, the plan was made, and he started the work for the approvals, and then I took over and just followed the plan as it was.
So my question to the town, has the town come out and remeasured?
The town did come out, yep, because people had said that the house was too high.
What is the height now?
It's exactly what it was on the original plan. On the, on the first engineering plan that he gave me, that's the finished garage floor height. And because somebody had said it was too high, a gentleman mentioned earlier, so they came out with their own survey equipment, they didn't rely on me or my engineer, or his engineer, I should say, they brought their own equipment out, and they measured it, and it was, and it was dead on with the plan.
It's Don Hockey again. So then why is there such a problem with the water if this was all such dead-on calculations?
All's I, all I can say is that, that property doesn't drain well, because there's a lot of craters everywhere.
Where are the craters?
I, I could walk it with you, there's craters all along the, the cinder block wall, it's all up and down, up and down, and all along behind your property, there's a lot of wells, you know, cut out, like, it looks like, I don't know if there's some trees that had fallen or whatever, but, so the water doesn't flow, it just, it kind of rains and sits there, and, and has to percolate down into the ground.
Bob Devens again, can you tell me if they took the height elevation off the pile of dirt that was in the middle of the yard?
No, I, I have no idea, there's, there's a depiction on the original plan of that pile of dirt that was there.
You're admitting there was a pile of dirt in the middle of that lot?
Absolutely, yeah.
So did they take the, that reading from that? Well, that's where the house is, where that pile of dirt was.
No, I, I have early pictures-
And that's where the house is?
I have early pictures of that, that I can dispute that with.
Anybody else wish to come up?
Hello, Merrill DeLuca, 218 Lancaster Drive, I live adjacent to your home, which is huge, I must say. What trees are you cutting down? Because I've been here since the early 90s, the 89, so in fact, we bought the house on the original property.
Okay, all right, the white, is it a white house?
It, no, it's the gray, the blue, I live next door to Brian.
Okay, okay.
I'm curious to know where the trees are that you're cutting down, because-
There are a lot of, like, medium-sized trees along the back, there's like a, a lot of, like saplings, and some, some larger trees, and, and, you know, a lot of them are in bad shape to begin with, and need to come down, and a lot of them are also being attacked by some kind of beetle, something, so they shouldn't even need to come down. And there's a very big, 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 big tree in the corner that went down, goes on to the Devens property, that we're going to remove as well.
Yeah, that doesn't, I don't believe, because I remember when that tree went down.
Yeah, it's a big tree.
Big, yeah.
About as big as this couch.
Uh-huh, yes.
Yeah, so, so, you know-
I'm just concerned that you're going to be taking down trees into people's properties Um, I'm just concerned that you're going to be taking down trees into people's properties that are not, that don't belong to this gentleman.
No, it would be.
I apologize.
We wouldn't go outside his property lines. But we don't, we don't have the ability to do that. We have to stay within our property line.
Okay, because there, there's no fences really over there, so it's very easy to go.
Right, but we have stakes and we have survey equipment to make sure we're in line with things. We, we wouldn't do that.
Thank you.
I can give you that assurance, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other members of the public have questions of this testimony at this time?
Actually, Mr., Mr., Chairman?
Mr. Matt.
Yes, Mr. Dinesh Moore. Do you mind if I ask another question?
Absolutely, ask, ask another question. We have a question from the board first.
So, Mr. Dadesco, I'm looking, while everyone was asking their questions, I was taking a look at the grading plan.
Yeah.
It looks to me, and I'm just asking for you to confirm if this is correct, that in the existing conditions, there's like a high point, um, basically next to the house, so water flows basically towards the backyard and the front yard from that point.
So about the 3043?
And if, correct me if I'm wrong, well, I, I'm looking kind of at the grades around that cluster of trees right by the, um, or right, right by where you have your survey, uh, notes for the, uh, alignment.
Right.
Um, right around there, it looks like that point that is high and then it breaks in two different directions. Is that?
Yes.
Is that your understanding?
Yeah, kind of crest there, yeah.
So, and my understanding from the proposed grading plan is that's going to take that away and it's going to have a high point flowing down with like a valley?
Right, so we're not going to build anything up there. We're just going to pull down from there. So we're not going to be land locking any water that previously had flowed. If anything, we would increase the flow.
So effectively, you're creating a channel for water to flow down?
Correct, correct.
Naturally, along the edge of the property?
Right.
Just, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, now you have.
Hi, Patty O'Flaherty, 169 Knoll Road again. Um, two questions. One is, so let's say you, this is approved and, and it's done. What's the timeframe that, um, there can be any action done if, so if six months down the road, do we wait for the next spring to happen when the water is the most like, well, is there a timeframe and is there? You know, because currently right now, there's a $5,000 bond being held or something, right?
Yeah.
From the, the, you're granted the CO.
I, I think, I think, you know, as much as I work with town engineering, um, they're very easy to work with and I don't think they're going to put a time limit as far as like three months, six months. If, over the next year, if there's a problem, um, and knowing Manu, he's, wants to be a good neighbor, um, he'd be willing to take care of whatever needs to get done. You know, so it's not like one and done. If there is, I mean, if it was one and done, we wouldn't be here. Um, because we had an approved plan and there's an issue, so we're here to resolve it. So if there's another issue, um, he'd be open to resolving it, correct?
And the, the bond that's currently being held, is that held for some length of time or?
It's held for a year. Yeah, a year. Yep.
Any other questions by members of the public at this time?
Thank you. My name is Jeff Biggs. I'm a professional engineer. I'm, I'm here on behalf of the Savarsteins. I have looked at the, uh, property, uh, and, uh, I think I'm familiar with your firm. I was a township engineer at Benville many, many, many moons ago.
I know my father Dominic.
Yeah, Father Dominic.
Yes.
And he was a very great guy.
He's a legend. He's still around.
Very nice guy.
I always say I'll never be able to wear his shoes the way he wore them.
But Dan, what I wanted to ask, when I looked at this, you said two things that jumped right out at me. And you said there was perk, perk, I don't know if you used the word.
It wasn't a perk test, but the soil perks pretty well.
And it perks into, perks into the ground?
Yeah, the, the soil perks pretty well.
I could, uh, put a boat in there.
Like, like digging the soil, like if we, if we go down the hill a little bit, because I dig a lot around there. If you go down the hill a little bit, out to Lake Owatha Hill, with the outside of it. You go down two feet and it's clay. And it's clay as far as, almost as far as you can dig.
Okay.
So, but this property on top, we didn't have that problem. Um, there was never any water buildup in the, in the foundation. We had a lot of rainstorms. Um, it perks really well. I actually hit sand, um, behind the garage, um, where I've never seen sand until I got to the top of the hill. That's where you see it on top of the hill. I never see it on the downside. So we never had any, any water issues doing the foundation or digging the foundation, right?
Well, one of the questions, uh, when I look at the plan, unfortunately, I have to say that the, and it looks like the board members have the same plan, eleven by seventeen. It's hardly readable. Uh, but certainly conceptually I can. And what I did to try to read this plan is I took pictures of it and expanded it on my phone so I could read some of the notes. Um, but you did say, I believe, that there was a prior plan before this one that were, I presume this is the one we're looking at.
Right.
Tonight for the final grading.
Right, there was a plan for when we built the house. And this is a separate project, so we, we had new plans.
And was that a lot grading specifically for this house? Or, or was there other grading plans?
No, specifically.
Subdivision, I presume, of three lots?
There was a three lot subdivision.
Okay.
Um, another builder had built those two houses.
Okay.
And then he purchased the property and then hired me to build that house.
And so you weren't involved in that subdivision yet?
I wasn't involved in it, no. No, I don't even know who did it.
Okay.
Yeah, I know who built the houses, but I'm not sure if he was involved in the subdivision.
Has, have you looked into, and I've looked at your plan in terms of grading and, uh, if I take the letter of the law of the grading, yes, it goes around the corner and out to the front.
Right.
And I qualify that, is, it says that on the plan.
Right.
Uh, looking the property and because you know that back.
Sir?
Yes?
I'm, I'm just going to stop you because.
Got a question.
Yeah.
Well, I'm getting to a question about it. So having, having looked at the property, the, uh, your plan shows spot elevations on the existing grading and I think, I presume that's when you took over.
Yes.
Fred Meola?
Yes, Fred.
He did that?
Yep.
And I know Fred, good guy.
Yep, known of since I was eight.
Uh, he did, he did the, uh, spot elevations in the existing grading.
Correct.
And he prepared the proposed grading.
Correct.
Correct. So in the southwest corner, that's everyone here, mostly everyone's, or, my folks' most, biggest concern is that southwest corner and the water coming out of there.
Right.
And your attempt here, it shows conceptually on the plan, is to, uh, collect that water from around back, head it around the corner and send it out to the front.
Right.
To, to be a short description.
Yep, that's simple enough, yep.
And, you know, I drew a little picture of this with a red line to show conceptually that, that, that's it. However, the grading doesn't give a sharp.
Sir, I'm going to stop you right there and I'll, I'll tell you why. This is just procedure. You were stated that you're a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. You're, you're a professional hired by the neighbors?
No, I'm not even hired.
You're not hired?
I'm friends, I'm friends of the neighbors a long time.
Okay.
They asked me to take a look at it, which I did yesterday, yesterday.
Fair enough. So, yes.
There's no great. There's no great, uh.
I, I sense that you're about to enter into some professional.
I'm aware of your questions and testimony part.
Exactly. So, so if you're going to get it, so you're, you're, typically, I actually don't even allow professionals, but this is not hired, you're here to even cross examine. You can give your professional opinion on the record. You're right about to go into a professional opinion. Before you go that route, we're still in the questions and answers.
Good point, absolutely.
So if you were going to give a professional engineering opinion on this matter, when the question and answer session is done, I can bring you up and swear you in and go through your qualifications and qualify you as an expert engineer in the state of New Jersey and then you can offer your opinion on the matter. At this point, we're still in the Q and A portion.
I'm a retired engineer for many, 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 many years, for representing many towns. I'm aware of that. I'm stupid for doing it because I retired for a number of years.
No, no, it's, it's fine. It's a very fine.
But I am going to ask some questions and I'm trying to clarify this for the purpose of the board, which just procedurally, I find it odd that there's no engineer here for the applicant and no township engineer here to give testimony, although I understand he did put a report out, so that's fine. Uh, but I did have, I did actually have specific questions for the engineer. And I'm going to ask some questions of Dan that he probably can't answer technically, but can answer as to whether he did it or didn't do it. And if I can, that's what I'd like to proceed.
You are aware that this is simply for a soil moving permit. It's not for site plan. It's not for.
I quite frankly am baffled how we are at this point in the game with people living in the house. I just don't understand it, but that's okay. Uh, Dan, my real question is, obviously, I think everybody in this room recognizes there's issues with water that you're trying to solve here and have you looked at alternatives?
If there was an issue, I wouldn't be here.
Have you personally looked at alternatives?
I'm trying to fix the issue, right.
Yeah, have you looked at alternatives to this plan in terms of?
Getting the water out of there. No.
You didn't?
This, this plan was presented as something that would work. I gave it to town engineering. Um, they agreed that it would work. So, and because of the volume of soil, um, I needed to bring it forward to planning board, so here we are.
What is the maximum cut, would you say, in the earth that's there now in the back southwest corner?
Um, I think it's like six hundred something yards total of moving the soil.
Not the quantity of earth, not the quantity of earth.
Talk about the depth.
The amount of cut. In other words, if you had a profile on this, uh, swale, let's call it simply, uh, what would be the maximum cut in the back, in the, in the back corner?
Yeah, to be honest, I'm with you. I'm just going to follow the plan. I didn't calculate the cut. That's up, I leave that to the engineer to do. You know? And if he's done this.
Would you think it's in the, in the magnitude of about eight inches?
Probably, yeah.
If that?
Yeah, okay, yeah. It's, that's not a great thing. We're, we're moving some dirt around and, and smoothing it out because there's, it's very uneven and I want to create a nice, smooth path for the water to flow to get out of there, rather than it being trapped back there.
Okay. When I looked at the property today, I noticed out in front of the property, looking at the house on the right side, near your inlet where your swale is going.
Yeah.
There's a number of red flags. I didn't enter the property there, so I'm not sure what that is. Do you know that?
Might have been, um.
Cable?
Mark out. We did, um, we did a underground electric there. I don't know. Somebody might have called for a mark out.
Yeah.
I, I didn't notice any. I'd have to go by and see what that is.
My thought was it was some kind of a utility.
Yeah.
And that's happens to be right where your swale is going to go, right?
Yeah.
And, uh, so have you investigated the excavation there necessary for that?
Yeah, we did the excavation, so we're aware of what's there and, and whether or not it would interfere.
But presumably in that area, uh, you're going to have to excavate further.
Um, we, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be digging down there. We already have slope by the time we get there.
Hmm, okay. Well, that'll come back with testimony.
Yeah.
Uh, but you, you think that you're not excavating, in other words, let's say roughly forward of the circle?
Correct. And if, and if any utilities needed to be moved to facilitate it, that's, you know, that's what we do.
Yeah, it would be easy, but it would just.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, I think any, well, okay. Um, I did see a note on the plan that I thought, I can't find it because I can't read it now that I'm here. Uh, something to the effect that the, um, I'm not sure who the guarantee was, but I think it was the engineer. Uh, under your SC notes, and it was maybe, uh, SC two or three, said something about the engineer is guaranteeing that no water is going to run off your property, uh, to the neighbor's property. You call that note?
And I don't, I don't see that at SC two.
Well, I'll be darned if I can find it now.
SC two is contract, shall install, so.
But I, I believe it's.
Soil permeability and groundwater table shall be submitted at least two weeks prior, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, I don't see any guarantees. But I mean, that's what an engineer.
Okay.
Is, is, you're not aware of the note though. He's approving it and guaranteeing that his, if we follow his plan, that water will flow the way it's depicted, yeah.
And you, so you dug holes in the property there. How deep did you go?
When we dig the foundation, we probably went about eight feet.
Oh, where the house is?
Yeah, yeah.
Did you dig, did you dig anything in the back of the property?
No, no, I, I didn't. We, we went, there was a line of non-disturbance that was there for, um, for the, uh, for the, for the recharge aquifer. Um, so they didn't want us to go beyond it, build anything back there and so forth. Um, and we feel that we're following the spirit of that by not building any structures back there. We're just smoothing out the land.
Okay. Uh, you also mentioned something about digging through and you said something like you punched through and then you got to the sand along the sand.
Yeah, that was, that was about, right about eight foot. It was right about eight foot.
About eight feet, okay. Um, I honestly, that was one of my questions about the site in general in the background.
Mm-hmm.
And when I was thinking of alternatives, I had thoughts about that, which I'll talk about later, I guess. Um, but you did see, for lack of a better word, you punched through this impermeable area and got to something that perked.
Right, and even the soil down to that wasn't clay. It, it, it's a, it's a mixed soil that, you know, would perk. Yeah, there was, like, lower Lake Owatha, or I should say, the other side of the hill? We hit clay that you can make a, you know, a ball out of, but this stuff is, you know, it doesn't stick. It, it crumbles and, you know, it, it's got enough, um, gravel mixed in with it and so forth. It, it perked pretty well. No water coming into the foundation when we dug it. I had no water, um, coming up from the bottom and no water stayed in the foundation hole when it rained. Um, it always perks right down.
Do you have a sub pump in the basement?
Yeah, and a sub pump in the basement.
Sir, sir.
The question?
I'm having real difficulty understanding how this really applies to this case at this time. The building is built. The land was not graded properly for whatever reason. The applicant is trying to fix it. And I'm just having a great deal of difficulty understanding why we're going through a long line of questioning about something that he's trying to fix.
Because I'm trying to get to the possibility that there's a better solution to solve the problem. That's where I'm going with it. And the thing that opened it up with his testimony about the area they had to punch through and get to good material. And.
So to answer your question, um, the sub pump does not run unless it rains heavily and then it runs for a little bit, you know, throughout the next day or so, um, off and on, and then it doesn't run again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I think you said that, uh, no trees, uh, that you were going to take down, about forty trees. And that, um, none of the property owners, other than, none of the trees would come down except on your property, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, and there's no trees right on the property line, maybe just over the property line, um, near that property line?
If it's not on this plan, we're not touching it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if you're familiar with touching the roots of a tree and disturbing those, you could kill a tree, correct?
And if there's trees that you're concerned about, I'm happy to work with you. Let's walk the property, mark them and, you know, we'll, we'll make sure we're careful.
Okay. It did look like to me on the plans, there was a call for it. I'm not sure if you referenced it. And as built after you're all done.
Always.
By your engineer to confirm that in fact, the exact rating you have on this plan was what would be represented in the field when you're done. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all the questions that I have. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Derek Lauks, um, 222 Lancaster. Obviously, no one else voiced their concern with, um, town engineering. Uh, but there's more of an issue with just the Devens property. It's all the adjacent properties.
Do you have a question at this?
My question is, instead of, with his current, um, plan that he's doing, we also have to now, do we just have to call the, the engineering department and put more complaints up against the property? Because I think to do, due diligence is actually to maybe look at what trees, number one, are coming down because I would like to have them marked.
Yeah.
Because I butt up against the property also.
Yeah, they are marked and like I said, I'm happy to walk the property with you or anybody.
That's fine. Um, but again, the concern is there may be more of an issue. That's just one issue. So does the town want us to call starting tomorrow to put more, um, complaints up against the, uh, property owner to, to kind of relook at this whole plan? Because I think that's just going to solve the Devens issue, not going to solve the other.
What other issues are you?
The amount of water that's coming on Lancaster right now. That's the only thing I'm, I'm, you know, just asking a question.
Yeah.
What, is, are you willing to, you know, again, that's one issue?
Yeah.
You know, but none of us.
Right, and as, as per the plan to address everybody.
Let me interrupt that. So, this board right now has limited jurisdiction over this particular property and the application for soil movement. If there's issues on other properties, um, that's a, you know, more general township issue. If there's flooding on other properties and.
They're just here for the soil movement part.
The board now is really limited to this property and trying to resolve the water issues caused by this property.
But what I'm saying, that's the problem. We're all adjacent to the properties. They're the, you know, the Devens.
We can't just say, as the board, this board cannot go beyond the four corners of this property right now and say you need to fix A, B, and C. That's two, three properties down.
Yeah, we, we.
No, we're, I'm, I'm right against the property.
Yeah, we'd have to go to town, you'd have to go to town engineering and then he would have to say, um, talk about what the issue is. And then he would talk to us. We propose a resolution. If the resolution required us to go before the planning board, then they were here.
So they answered.
The only reason why we're here is because of the volume of soils above a hundred yards.
Okay.
Um, other than that, it's really town engineering that.
So, yes, we all have to call engineering tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, Dan, can I ask a point of clarification? Uh, based on the engineer's letter, we're not even, all we do is recommend and the application goes to council, correct? Because it's over five hundred cubic yards?
No, my, the, the ordinance is section three fifty regarding soil movement, which we have jurisdiction, the planning board has jurisdiction over. If the applicant complies with all the section three fifty requirements, then this board is to approve the soil moving application. If it doesn't, then they can either request waivers or deny the application. According to the town engineer correspondence, there was no objection to the soil moving application and the applicant has agreed to comply with all of the requirements in section three fifty.
Yeah, but item number six on the engineer's letter says that township council approval is required.
So then if that's what the ordinance requires, it's got to.
I believe there's a limit on the ordinance that if it's over a certain amount, in addition to us sort of recommending it, town council has to do the approval.
If that's what the, that's, you're right. Yes, what the ordinance states, correct.
So we're not even approving it. We're just recommending town council to approve it, correct?
That's the way the ordinance reads it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Um, Brian Hockey, 220 Lancaster Drive. When this plan was made, was this only for the water for the Devens or for my yard?
It's for the water in the entire backyard, to get the water from the entire backyard, to bring it around the side and out the front. So it's not to bring it onto your property instead of Rex's and Patty's. It's not to get it off of our property and bring it onto their property. It's to get all the water in the entire backyard, swell that around, and get it to go out the front of the property. Yeah, yeah. I can give you a copy of it.
As I understand, as I understand the law, and my attorney's gonna tell me if I'm right, the way that any project is done, in order for it to meet the standards of the state, it may not have any more flow of water off the property than when the property was before the project was begun.
Right, I think it's even one step beyond that.
And what you're trying to do is you're trying to mitigate the issues that appear to have come up since the house was built. Now, do you believe... And were you involved before?
I got involved after he had the architectural plans drawn and the engineering plans drawn. And he gave them to me and asked me to build a house. I wasn't involved in the development of the plan or the original site plan or anything like that.
All right. So you believe that when you built the house, that once the project was done, clearly some problems did crop up, and you're now solving those?
Yeah, all I can say is that the Devens have complained about water, so we tried to come up with a plan to resolve that. And some other people have mentioned they have water problems as well. And as I read the plan, all the water from the backyard is gonna be brought out the front. So if there's... And we're not looking to landlock any water and dam up any water. I'm not gonna raise it up so water that was previously draining onto the property is held back. That's not our goal. It's not what we would do. And if we ran into that during the construction of following through with this plan, we would have to address it at that time, because that's not our goal.
So if we were to turn down the soil moving permit, things would remain as they are?
Correct.
They would not be mitigated. The water would continue to flow onto the neighbor's property.
Correct.
And here, by giving you the soil moving permit, we're giving you an opportunity to try to resolve and mitigate the problem?
Correct.
Okay, just trying to let you know why we're here.
Right, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
That's the only reason why I wanted to re-clarify that you only knew about the Devens' issue.
You only knew about the Devens' issue. You didn't know about the other five houses that it really are affected still, and it's gotten worse. So that's my question to you is, wouldn't you be willing to just look at the whole property again? Because obviously, this plan is just solving the one side, and there's a lot of water coming in.
When an engineer draws a plan, he has to consider all adjoining properties. He can't just solve the Devens' problem and dam up water on the other side of the property that was previously flowing. It still has to flow. If there was water previously flowing onto the property, he cannot dam that up. It's still gotta continue to flow, and we have to address, you know, create a path for that water as well. So if there's water draining out to the property now, it will continue to, and we're gonna guide that water around to the front of the house.
So do you have drains on the left side of the house, or just the right?
Looking at the front of the house, we're looking at the... On the left side, we're starting in the left corner by Brian's property and swelling it around to the opposite side of his property, then out the front. So all the water from the backyard should slowly drain to the... Towards the Devens, there's gonna be a swell there. It's gonna coax it out the front of the property.
Couple of questions. One, just to clarify, there's absolutely no dirt being brought in?
No, no dirt.
No dirt, okay, thank you. Just to... Just 'cause I don't understand this, but a couple times it's been mentioned that there's been a no-touch line and aquifer something?
Aquifer, yeah.
Thank you. So you weren't allowed to touch that when you were building, but to make the aquifer do what it's supposed to do, whatever?
To recharge the aquifer, right.
Okay, thanks. But now you are allowed to touch it, like...
Well, we're not... See, what you wanna do is you don't wanna put anything on it, like a big pool or concrete structures or something like that, that's gonna prevent the water from draining down. If you're just putting grass, then it's gonna drain down, or if it's natural plants, whatever, it's still gonna drain down. We're just smoothing the land out and then putting organic material back there. We're not putting any structures out that's gonna prevent the water from going down into the ground. And that's also why, you know, a lot of the times when we build a house, I just pipe the liter drains right to the storm drain. But the site plan that he gave me had two tanks on it, that leach tanks, that makes sure that a lot of that water goes back into the aquifer. So it was part of the project in the beginning.
Gotcha. Mr. Dinsmore, you said that if... I think it was you, sorry if I'm wrong. If you turn down this plan, right, if this doesn't get approved, then nothing?
I'll turn to my attorney.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize. Whoever said that?
The question should be directed to the witness.
Okay. So if this gets shot down?
Right, right.
Then what? Are you required to come up with some other options, some other alternative plan to resolve the water issue? Or are you off the hook because of the town?
I would be required to work with engineering to come up with a plan, and that's what we did, yeah.
Right, but if this plan gets shot down, are you required to come up with another plan?
There would... We would have to mitigate the water, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And so going back to the bond that's being held for a year, it's a $5,000 bond, quite frankly. And a $1.5 million house, that is absolutely meaningless. It's pocket change. So if this doesn't get mitigated, like, what's our recourse? You know what I mean?
I can't really speak to that. Alls I know is I was hired to follow a plan, and that's what, you know, the engineering came up with a plan with my engineer, and I'm seeking to execute that plan.
So then maybe I ask the question of, not of you, Dan, maybe I ask that of the board. If this doesn't get... If this plan doesn't get approved, and it doesn't mitigate the water?
If we do it, and it doesn't mitigate the water, and there's still an issue, engineering's gonna come to the property owner and say that you need to do something. And then he's gonna call me, or the engineer, who's gonna call his own engineer to come up with a plan, and he's gonna call me and ask me to execute the plan.
Okay.
Like, I get a list of instructions, and I follow them. I don't have any decision-making aspect of it. I just follow the directions on the plan.
Bob Devens, again, 169 Knoll. Dan, I had a conversation with you and the town engineer and your excavator.
Yep.
And we were standing on the side of the property, watching the water puddle, correct?
Yep.
Okay. What did your excavator say we need to do to make that go away?
I don't recall a specific...
I could tell you exactly what he said.
Let me ask you.
We need to bring in tons of dirt to make that swell, so we can get this water to run out to the street. Hence, the topic before is, the elevation there is lower than the street. So to get that swell, either you're gonna have a four-foot-deep swell at the street...
You're testifying, sir.
So, okay, so was that my conversation with you, is to bring more dirt in, correct?
I don't... I'm looking at the plan, and I don't believe by looking at the plan...
Not the plan. I'm asking you, while we had this conversation, the excavator said, "I have to bring dirt in to make this swell."
Yeah, I don't recall that specific thing, and I don't necessarily agree with that.
All right, let me ask you this. You built the house, you put the foundation in.
Yeah.
It never filled up with water?
Nope.
Never?
Never.
So why did you run the power to my house to the pump to pump out the foundation?
We didn't pump out the foundation.
You're under oath. You know that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You did not run an extension cord from your basement to my house to help pump out that basement?
The water... I mean, I'll take you in his basement if you wanna see it.
That's not the question, Dan. The question is, did you put a pump in the basement, run power cords to my house to pump out the flood?
Yeah, it wasn't flooded. Like, when we pour concrete, I have to have it dry after it rains.
Dan, did you run an extension cord from your house to my house to pump out the basement?
That may have... I'm trying to remember. To be honest with you, I don't recall.
Just say yes. Just say yes.
Yes, I believe you to be honest.
You did. You know you did.
So you recall that better than me. I remember using a electric from you, but I don't remember what it was for.
Okay, so... Well, I'm just trying to tell you what the ground is really like there.
We didn't have the temporary electric.
I understand that, and he is trying to mitigate the problem.
And I understand that, but the water is not going to go... He says the water's gonna permeate into the ground. It's not. We have three foot of clay. I put my addition on, my backhoe could not dig the hole, because the clay was like rock.
Yeah, we didn't run into that on his property.
All right. We've had a lot of questions here already, and I don't think we're really...
220 Lancaster Drive.
Yes, sir.
So being that was a construction yard for the town when they built Knoll Road, could it be you didn't hit any...
Pretty close, yeah.
You didn't hit anything because the ground was already...
Possibly.
...to a yard.
Possibly.
And mine yards are all clay.
Yeah, we didn't run into a lot, you know, any problems with, like, you know, big rocks. We got, like, some boulders that we were able to move and stuff like that, and the soil was pretty good there. It really wasn't bad there.
It was all dug up. There was mounds of dirt everywhere because of the construction.
What we're trying to do, Brian, is we're trying to coax the water out of that area at the front of the house. I mean, that's all we can do at this point.
This water's gonna get worse than it is now, that's all.
Yeah, I don't foresee that happening.
Going back to the question about the trees, are you going to tag the trees so we can actually see what trees that are coming down?
Yeah, we can tag them. They were marked, but they may need to be re-marked.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to cut off questioning here, because we're going to have some time for the opposition to present any case they wish to do. I think the questions have been asked to prove that they're... To indicate that there's a problem in the area, and we'll go forward. Any questions from members of the board on this at this time? Mr. Mealy?
My concern is that two of our key members, the planner, Mr. Weiser, and the engineer, Mr. Canjiano, are not here, both of whom could provide some great testimony regarding this application. My intention would be, if I were the chairman, which I'm not, would be to put this off until another meeting, so that they could provide some key testimony regarding this matter.
As a chairman, I am gonna give you my opinion on that, and that is that I think that, what I said before, that this is an attempt at mitigating the issue, and I didn't think that their presence was necessary when they asked not to be here.
I agree with you, Tom.
I'd also, as a former engineer for this board, I will also say that Mr. Canjiano in particular did not review this application. It's reviewed by the township, because it's a soil moving permit, not an application. So, anything he gives will be basically off... Would any advice he give or guidance would be totally off the cuff.
And because of that, I didn't think that it was essential. I don't think... I still don't think it's essential. I agree that it would throw some light on the project itself, but I'm having great difficulty understanding why anybody would oppose this, to be honest with you. Because I think it's an attempt, a valid, reasonable attempt by the applicant to mitigate the issue. And if it doesn't, then complaints can be filed, and they would have to be responded to.
Thank you, Chairman.
So that's kind of where I am with that. Are there any other comments, Mr.?
Yeah, just quick questions on your site plan. So it looks as if the existing condition, your low point is about 302.
Yeah.
And the proposed condition would be 302.8, if I'm reading that correctly? So you're increasing the height a little bit in the backyard?
Right. There's a high point about midway through the yard. You're pulling some of that back, right?
Yes, and I see that too, because your current conditions, you have the high point roughly about equal with the house.
Right.
Whereas that high point won't exist in the future. You're digging a swell.
Pull that back, right, and use that to create the swell.
And the street level is at 298, which is below the point in the backyard.
Correct.
So in that way, if I'm reading these designs correctly, that swell should move things from the 303 zone down to the 302 and out to the street to the 298.
Correct. And if we follow the plan as it's written, it'll work.
And you will be following the plan as it's written?
Absolutely, yeah.
Those are my questions, sir.
Okay. Any other members of the board? I assume that that's your case.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm going to ask at this time if people would like to come up and speak in opposition to our requesting that the council approve a soil moving permit. We are not granting the soil moving permit. We are possibly recommending to the council that they permit a soil moving permit. That is the entire purview of this application. That's everything. We are only here to move soil with the attempt to mitigate the issues that have been brought to the attention of the applicant. If somebody here wishes to speak in opposition, that they would like us to not approve the motion that we would ask the council to approve the soil moving permit, then please come forward and tell us why we shouldn't approve the resolution to the council to approve the soil moving permit.
It's also statements in favor, Mr. Chairman, just in case there is somebody out there...
Oh, yes, also...
Who would like to speak in favor.
I'm sorry.
I know there's a lot of questions, and it sounds like there's opposition, but it's also questions, I mean, testimony in favor of the application, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
So if anybody would like to testify either as an opponent or as in favor, or frankly, if you feel the need to make a statement on this at this time, whether it's in favor or against, please feel free to come forward and say so. Come on up.
Before you give your statement, I'm gonna swear you in, because you're gonna be providing your testimony. So please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm a testimony you're about to give? It would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, and please spell your last.
Patty O'Flaherty, O apostrophe, F as in Frank, L, A, H, E, R, T, Y.
And your address, please?
169 Knoll.
Thank you, ma'am.
You ask if there's anyone in opposition of doing this. Obviously, we're in desperate need of getting this resolved. I'm not opposed to... I'm not educated enough to know if this is gonna fix it or not. When I look at the situation, I think there's no way. There's just no way. Again, no expert here. What I oppose is I think there would probably be a better alternative, probably more expensive, but a better alternative, which would have been, which is what we had asked for when the problem started a year and a half ago, was to run a drainage system from the entire length of, basically from a little bit behind our pool house, which, and I'm sorry, I've never seen the plan, so I don't even know how to access them, but sort of the where that is on your plans. So from... Oh, God, my keys are too small. I can't see this. But basically, from almost next to the house, if I'm looking at the house to the right of the house, from that point, probably about 20 feet behind that, actually, is there standing water, and that's the water that goes into our pool house, goes into our patio that's between our pool and our pool house.
Had it done that before the project?
Absolutely not.
Had never done that before?
No. And Dan can attest, the very first time it happened, in our pool house, it's this cinder block building that had been there for 100 years, because it was the hot house for the farm that the lane used to be. We've had a stainless steel refrigerator in the corner, okay? Sorry, I never would have put a $2,000 refrigerator in that corner if it ever had leaked.
Sure.
Never leaked. Called Dan over the first time. He, you know, was honest, came right over, saw the situation. I mean, it was about five or six inches of water. It's gotten better, because at that time, you know, the house was... There was no gutter on the house. It wasn't going out to that pump system, whatever. But every time it rains, almost every time it rains, we still get a good two inches of water in there. So what had been suggested was to run a drainage system from, let's say, about 20 feet behind the house, all just along the whole side of our property, run that out to the street. That would have taken care of it. The excavator suggested we run a... They build a retaining wall along the driveway, and it would run right through. So I'm not trying to, you know, negate any suggestion of how to fix this, but that sounds like a much more feasible way of fixing this.
Would it be reasonable, and would you be opposed to their trying this? And if it doesn't work, they would then have to come up with a Plan B that might be more along those lines?
Yeah, I mean, as long as the problem gets taken care of... Yeah, I mean, as long as the problem gets taken care of, I mean, it just needs to get taken care of. Our, our property value is, you know, the water runs not just in our poolhouse, but it runs through the poolhouse.
It is incumbent upon the applicant to stop that water flow that was in excess of what it was before. They have to do it.
Yep.
All right. And this is the plan that they've come up with in conjunction with our engineer. So, I, I, I'm just trying to, to gauge where we can go with this.
I mean, again, I don't know if it's going to work, but that's just...
Agreed.
Yep.
If it doesn't work, they're still on the hook to fix it.
May I ask a witness question?
Yes. Yeah, excuse me.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Hey, thanks, thanks for your testimony. You mentioned in the last statement about running pipes along the driveway. Of that property or your property?
No, of their property.
Okay. I, I, I want to make sure I heard that. Thank you.
Yeah, so it would run along the whole south side of the...
But nothing to do on your property, meaning that they didn't want you to spend more money on your property, is my point?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, and I've never, ever had any intention of, you know, doing anything on their property.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else?
No.
Jeff Biggs, D I V D S. I'm, I want to give that woman a P E license. It's actually in my notes. And I say this not...
Hang on, sir, because I'm just gonna, I'm gonna offer, I'm gonna make a couple statements before, I'm gonna swear you in first. Do you swear affirm testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Now, name and address for the record, please.
Jeff Biggs, D I V D S, 6 Hussa Place, Denville, New Jersey.
Can you spell that, Road?
Hussa. Hussa, H U S S A.
Now, you stated earlier, and I'm just gonna qualify you, you stated earlier that you were a licensed engineer, but you're now, since retired.
I'm retired, I'm still a licensed professional engineer, current.
Your license is current?
Licensed since 1976. For Young Engineer of the Year, Municipal Engineer of the Year.
Your, your license is in good standing?
Just speak into the microphone, I apologize. Speak into the mic.
Is this on? Yes.
Your license is current?
Yes.
Do you have your license number on you?
I don't have it on me, but I believe that's it.
Okay, so, sir, Mr. Chairman, you're being offered this evening as an expert in the field of civil engineering?
Yes.
And you're going to be providing testimony and offer conclusions in the same capacity?
I'm going to recommend alternatives to look at.
But you're going to be offering?
Professional recommendations, yes.
Mr. Chairman, who, who were you hired by, sir?
I am here on behalf of friends of ours. Passersby.
I, I just, I just want to know from our attorney, in the past, the applicant's application is the applicant's application, and that alternatives and other things like that are sometimes useful to know, but other times, I mean, it's still the applicant's application.
Our options are to pass this or reject it?
Exactly.
Period. We're not going to consider other alternatives, and that's not before us.
That's a, that's a great point. And just from procedural standpoint, and, and really, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, from, from a procedural standpoint, I should have offered before Ms. O'Flaherty testified, if there was any opposition, that they would present a case in chief in opposition.
Yeah.
So, that was, at this point is where we are. So, Ms. O'Flaherty was, testimony was taken at a turn. So, this is essentially an opposition, but to the board member's point, we are either here to approve the application that's being requested or deny the application being requested. Mr. Biggs is being offered as a professional engineer to provide some testimony based on his, based on his expertise as to why it should be denied, I'm, I'm sure is, you know?
My test, my testimony, quite honestly, I believe it's in the benefit of the applicant as well, because I think there's going to be problems with this, and I think that there's things he should consider, and all I want to do is put that on the record. I'm not here to say I'm against this or, or for this, I'm just saying that there's obviously something here that should be done. Instead of this, that would make it better, and quite frankly, most of this benefit that I'm going to talk about, I think, is for the applicant's property, not for the others, although it will definitely help secure a more permanent solution for them as well.
Sir, have you had a chance to go through the property?
I've gone to the property on two occasions. I have pictures on my phone on it.
Did you have a chance to see the plans drawn by the expert engineer?
Yes, I did. I have copies here that I...
And you, you were able to look at the plans and formulate an opposition to the plans drafted? Or your own, your own opinion?
In the context of what I just said, yes.
And you stated earlier that you received the plans last night, and you had the opportunity to look at the fact of...
Actually, I received them this morning.
This morning. Mr. Chairman, he's being offered as a, essentially a expert in the field of engineering to offer an alternative solution that perhaps the applicant's engineer did not consider, that the board, my recommendation is to hear the professional testimony, and so it could be placed on the record, understanding that this board has really functioned to either approve this application as it's presented or to deny it. So, with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Biggs should be permitted to offer his professional opinion.
I don't see any opposition from members of the board to his testimony on this at this time, but Mr. Math?
Mr. Chairman, with your, with your permission, can I ask you a question? So, Mr. Biggs, as I understand it, you're here not being compensated as an engineer, correct?
That's correct.
And you're retired from active, like, employment? And do you...
I am retired, yes.
You don't, and do you have any liability insurance? Not that it's a requirement to testify, but I'm just curious. Okay, thank you.
There was testimony, sorry, that his license was in good standing and current.
If I was designing the solution and putting my name and seal on it, I would then do that.
Understood, thank you.
I know Fred Miola, I know the engineer that did this, he's a good engineer. I have no bones with Fred, he's, he's a good engineer.
I'll agree he's an engineer.
Okay, well.
All right, I, I, you know, there's only one of us up here who's an engineer. So, we have no way, frankly, of being certain that your plan is better than their plan. Their plan is what's on the table here. Your plans, if you want to point out a couple of possible tweaks or where they've gone wrong, I don't mind hearing that.
That's all I'm going to do.
And it may be beneficial at the end of the day to contact Mr. Tedesco and his engineer and offer these as viable solutions, but...
I just want...
Mr. Chairman, if I can offer, I mean, the reality is, this design is really subject, it's, it's the design of Fred Miola, the engineer, and, you know, the, the key is, if it's going to be altered, he has to do the alterations, and it's subject to the review and approval by the Township Engineering Office.
Right.
Right? So, now, bear in mind, my understanding is, we're only making a recommendation for council to approve or not approve, and we're allowed to attach reasonable conditions to our, our, our approval or recommended approval. So, there's still an opportunity for the engineering department to still look at the intricacies of the design. And the only time it would have to come back to us after the fact is if the quantity of soil changes in a higher amount, I believe, procedurally. Is that kind of where we stand, Dan?
Yes, I, I agree with that analysis, yes.
Okay, thanks.
I can tell you that in my past experience with soil movement permits, which we had in Denville, it were, the ordinance was changed like eight times. It's like the worst thing you have to do in the town. It's a difficult application for a board, too, because it's not your typical role either. But I'm, I'm offering these comments mostly so that the applicant would consider this on his property. The major issue I see, as we all have discussed today, including, including the applicant's contractor, water. Water is our problem. It's here on this site, it's been on this site, it's in the neighborhood as well, and the, the issue is, how do we make it better? I think the plan that's in front of you in raw contours, which I call to your attention if you're not aware of it, because I really didn't pick it up right away myself, those are one-foot contour intervals on this plan for proposed grading, which means, which I was looking at, is the, for the purpose, just a clarification, I drew a red line, that's not a created swell, but that's the effect of the water where it's going, which we heard testimony to. That line is at much less than a 1% grade, in my estimation. It's not an exact calculation because I don't have a scaled map, but that's approximately what it is, which means that this rear corner of the property, and, and I would hope would be usable property for the applicant, is going to still be wet. It's going to still be wet, in my estimation. There's water sitting there, has been there for a long time, and yes, there are some craters there where trees have gone over, and those are actually pools. So, when I heard about, you know, a perk, thinking in terms of a perk test and, and water filtering through the ground, I thought, really? On this property? And then I thought, well, maybe there's what they call a fragile pan, which is an impermeable layer in some different soil types, and maybe that's there, and once you bust through it, we'd actually have some drainage into the ground. So, I don't know if that's there, but based on Dan's testimony, I'm thinking the possibility of that is, is, would help. So, I thought that from a grassy area, which is, I presume is what is supposed to happen here in the end on this entire backyard, according to the grading, that's not going to still drain. Will it go off-site to the property in that, what I talked about is the southwest corner of the property, actually southeast corner of the property? There's only about an eight-inch, we heard testimony, it's only about an eight-inch creation, some of it's very, very slight excavation, and maybe a little bit of a berm. I thought that if you could create a, and I think I heard somebody say, the street, Noel Road, there's an inlet, right out by the driveway there, that that was only a couple of feet difference from the back, I think. I don't remember the number, but it's not a lot different. But there's a storm drainage system there that is lower than that. And it, yeah, so there's plenty of fall to put a French drain to that, from that corner on the applicant's property, all the way out and directly connect it into there, and that would do two things. One, it would provide much better grading. Two, it would de-water essentially that, that rear corner of the property that everybody's concerned about, and it would give the applicant much more usable property for whatever purposes he wanted.
So...
Yes, you, you can, yeah, Jeff. If he finishes, if he just finished the point, sir, and then...
Well, I, and I, I'm just saying that I think, and I asked, I was going to ask Dan, that's why I asked him, I forgot, if they, there was a profile done along this line out, and you would see very clearly in this profile the problem with this drainage. Not that it can't work at all, but it's not going to work perfectly because it's too shallow in the back portions of the property. And of course, there's one other option to that, but, and, and actually, a neighbor actually talked about it, too. Go ahead.
Okay, so, I think part of the thing is, as the spirit of the original subdivision and how they wanted that line of non-disturbance, they don't want to just take all the water off the property and put it down in the storm drain. They want it to have, to have an opportunity to perk into the ground as much as possible before it gets to the storm drain. That's my understanding of the original plan. That's why they had a line of non-disturbance there. It wasn't, it wasn't for purposes of, of anything other than to recharge the aquifer, as I understood it. So, if I take all that water from the backyard and I just kick directly out through the storm drain, then we're not recharging aquifer as much as they originally wanted to. And, and there may be a hard pen, and you know, the, with, over the years, when there are those craters like that, and all the organic material builds up and it builds silt on the bottom, and it doesn't drain well, but we're going to be excavating all of it, which is going to till that ground and allow it to, to drain much better than it is now.
Okay. Well, I thought that was good, except it appears to me, as far as testimony, that really you're taking down about 40 trees, which is pretty much disturbing that whole back area, just, is that correct?
Yeah.
I mean, it's except...
Almost wall to wall. Pretty much. Right. Except for right, right against...
As a matter of fact, there's a tree that I talked about that's on the line, I think you're going to, this, you're going to kill that tree, too.
Right.
And I was in the park system for another 20 years, and I know that tree is going to die.
Yeah, and we, we deal with, you know, the tree roots all the time, we try not to disturb them as much as possible, you know? And if we do disturb it enough, then the tree's going to have to come down, because it's going to come down sooner or later anyway.
Anyway, that was my, my recommendation, is to consider that, and I thought that, that would improve the applicant's property, it would give more security to the neighbors in terms of a more positive solution for draining that area. I think as it is right now, I think it's a mosquito problem at certain times of the year, without a doubt. I mean, there's ponding water, I got pictures of it galore on my phone. So, that's what I really wanted to say. I'd be glad to, at no cost, I'm not looking for any money, I'm not trying to do that. But if Fred wanted to call me, or if the applicant was interested in anything like that, I could discuss it with him if you want, and do what you want, but that's, that's all I had to say.
I'm a big fan of French drains, so...
Actually, Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I ask Mr. Biggs a question or two?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
You mentioned 1% slope as you think... Yeah, I'm just scaling it roughly off, using the graphic scale, and I'm coming up with one-foot drop every 60 feet. So, that's just over, that's, that's close to 2%. But do you think 1% is an, it would be an acceptable grade for, for a swell? I'm just curious.
No, I don't think it's acceptable for, for a groomed, for a groomed yard, you're going to...
What kind of slope would you...
How good Dan is, he's a, although, you could have laser, but...
That original line of non-disturbance was to allow that water to perk into the ground as much as it could before being directed out the front. So, if we were to kick it all out to the storm sewer, then we're not recharging aquifer. That's, I mean, that's, that's, you know, I think that's why...
What I saw there, I think that's why it was drawn the way it was drawn.
What I saw in that corner, there's no perk going on in that corner. Now, you might be able to bust through it, and it might be...
Right, and, and I think a lot of that's, like, you know, we've seen, that property's been used and abused over the years, been a lot of equipment back there 100 years ago, whenever it was, and I think, you know, tilling all that ground and, and churning it all up is going to allow it to drain a lot better.
I'm, I'm sorry, just getting back to the question.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Biggs, what, what, what slope would you look for if you were designing this for a backyard? I understand what you're saying, and I, I actually sloped my patio half a percent and wish I did 1% ever since, just at one point, well, every time it rains and I watch it not drain, but...
Of course, I, I would say a minimum, absolute minimum would be 2% to, to get a nicely drainable piece of property that you're not going to have to, and still have water and mow the grass when you want to, even when it, after it rains. That would be a minimum. I don't, I don't think you have that, but I could be wrong because I, I didn't have the scale. I told you, I took pictures of this.
Yeah, by the existing conditions plan, there's a graphic scale, and I double-checked it against the dimensions of the survey to make sure that it didn't get rubber-sheeted.
Okay. Well, it's, it's an idea, it's a suggestion, I think it would improve the property from two perspectives, the neighbors and the applicant, that's why I recommended it.
Okay, thanks.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For coming forward. Are there other members who wish to speak on this case at this time?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm a testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please.
Derek Loux, L O U X, 222 Lancaster Drive.
Go ahead, sir.
I guess my biggest thing is, I don't think we should approve to bring up to council just because I don't think we have all the information. Obviously, there's other neighbors that got involved after they saw the letter come through. Nothing against, you know, you, but... nothing against, you know, you, but there's a larger problem of water that really has gotten worse ever since the house was built. Towards, if you're looking at the house, the back left side of the property, but it's gotten worse. The neighbor next to me, there's like a lake every time it rains now, and that butts up to, there's new neighbors that are actually here now, but it butts up to their property. So when you're taking a bunch of trees out, trees take a lot of the moisture off, you know, because that's how they grow, right? So if we're gonna take out forty trees, I mean, I have two large trees on my property behind my fence, okay? My branches are falling more ever since that house was built, and it's just, the whole top of the tree is dying. It's just, the ground has gotten drenched, and I'm trying to find solutions myself. But it's, again, I think we're just taking the water from the one side, it's on the other side of the property also. I don't know how you're getting that water from the far side, over to the right side, the Devon side, you know, what are you doing about the right side? I guess I have to call the town tomorrow, put the complaint in, but that's what my concern is right now, is how we get in the water over there? I wanna, you know, invite you over so I can take a look at what trees are coming down, because I think there's more of an issue. When you start taking all these big trees down, you gotta bring soil, and there's no way you're gonna grade that property, taking all those trees down. That's just my opinion, and I'm not an expert, but there's some big trees on that property, and there's a lot of fallen trees, that have just fallen since the house was built.
Where do they get the tree removal permit?
That's our forester he is.
Yeah, the forester will review the tree removal process. The engineer has examined this. If there continues to be a problem, then the engineer would come out and scope out all of the problem, not just, you know, and then, again, as we've said before, if this plan doesn't work...
Well, that's why I'm saying, you know, why would we even approve this plan, when the problem seems to be bigger? Because it, no one ever, you know, it took us a while to really start talking to the town, I mean, I can speak for a few people, but I didn't call the town and complain, because I knew the Davids were already...
If this particular piece of property is the source of the problem, we now have two engineers that have basically said, "This should resolve the problem." The township engineer and the applicant's engineer.
But were they just looking at the water on the one side, or are we looking at the water that's all the way over on the side?
They have to look at the entire piece of property, as I understand it, so...
The proposed swale actually does go around the backyard and do a bit of an L, so it...
So, see this line here? So, we make the path here, it's gonna, all the way down. This is where the year, this is Brian's, we're looking at the back process, this is the one part of this property. So there's actually this property, you have to hear all the recent houses.
Sir, just to, sorry to interrupt.
I'm just trying to figure out how it's...
You guys can, we have additional members of the public here, so if you have questions of the plans, you can pull Mr. Tedesco aside.
I just needed to know where the...
Yeah, not a problem. We just have other members of the public that we want to get to.
We, in the past, we've generally encouraged the applicant, the opponents, to go off to the side, admittedly, and to discuss why there is, because I think you're both talking about trying to accomplish the same thing.
Which we are, that's why I said I'm not sure, you know, we're putting the cart before the horse, we're going to approve a, you know, his application, right?
Right.
Which, did they really look at the whole picture, which I don't think they did, because no one else complained yet? So now, we gotta get everybody on the phone tomorrow, and start complaining, because I, I just want the problem solved.
I understand that.
I don't wanna spend more money, but the whole thing is, why would you approve a plan that we haven't looked at?
I've been in land use law in this town, on one of the boards or the other, for thirty-two years, and I was always told by our engineers and by our attorneys, that the engineer has to look at the entire property, and that they're not allowed to allow any extra water to flow from the property than flew, than came off of the property before. So, what our engineers have presented us through this application, is their best guess as a way of, at the very least, bringing it back to the way it was before the house was built. And if it doesn't, they'll be back. You can be there and point out to the township engineer, "They said this would fix the problem, I've got a half a foot of water in my backyard that I didn't have before, it hadn't fixed the problem," and you can come back. I recognize you want it solved as soon as possible, and your fear is that this isn't This is what we're being presented with.
And it's recorded on record that, you know, it's a little bit larger than, I think, the scope of this work, that's why.
It may, or it may not. You know, and the applicant agrees to consult with you along the way, do you not?
How can you do that, absolutely?
All right, so they'll be approachable, and if you say, "This is working, or it isn't working," or whatever, they will talk to you. So, and, again, this is, the applicant is trying to solve the problem. Maybe not quite the way that some people suggest they might, but they've got engineering expertise that they've used, that says this will solve the problem. So, any other comments?
That's it, thank you.
He was never sworn in, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Please, just, get sworn in makes it easier.
Raise your hand, do you swear affirming testimony about to give would be the truth?
Truth, yeah.
Name, name for the record, please?
Manoj Patel.
Can you please spell your first name?
M-A-N-O-J. Last name Patel, P-A-T-E-L.
And you're the owner of the property?
Yes, 179 Noel Road.
You gave Mr. Tedesco the authority to file the application on your behalf. Okay, go ahead, sir.
No, I just wanna say that, I just wanna be a cooperative neighbor with you.
Let's speak into the microphone, hold the microphone.
Any kind of privacy thing you have, like about trees or anything, I'm fully cooperative. And I'll make a good relationship, I'm a new, you know, moved into this area, new house, and I wanna be a cooperative neighbor, and I wanna cooperate with you fully, so anything, you know, like trees, or privacy, or anything like that, I'm fully cooperative with you guys. I wanna create a good relationship with my neighbors, okay? I wanna be a good neighbor.
All right, any questions of the board? Nope. Any other statements in favor or opposed? Hearing and seeing none?
Mr. Chairman?
And Mr. Lagana too, so if this, if we do approve this tonight, and when would it go to the town council for approval? Is there an estimated amount of time for that?
Nora, when would this...
They go within a month?
I can't speak for when council is going to hear it. All I do is let the engineering department know that we are recommending it. Engineering will take care of scheduling it with council.
Okay, all right, so then the alternative would be, is if we deny it, and they go back to the drawing board for many, many more months?
Yes.
Okay, so in this case, if we do approve it, it gets, hopefully, under Jennifer, the town council, shortly, relatively speaking, and they can try to fix the issue.
Right.
And if it doesn't get fixed, it starts to fix it, because he's agreeing to that.
There'll still be lakes.
Okay, and it'll still be a lot sooner than if we deny it tonight, and it has to go back to the drawing board by multiple engineers, more paperwork, back to the planning board again?
Yep.
Okay, trying to make sure I know my timing here. I also have just a couple of comments as well, can I, can I continue?
All right, well, in a moment, I'm gonna allow for any comments in a moment, all right? Are there any other comments that anybody wishes to make? Do you wish to sum anything, or is that your case? All done, so this is the end, this ends the evidentiary portion of tonight's presentation. Now, are there any comments by the board on this application at this time? Mr. Napolitano?
Sure, thanks. Just for the record, there is a website I know that you can go to and search to see if your property is in wetlands. I don't know off the top of my head what it is, but it's something with the Fish and Wildlife Service. I remember when I was buying a house, almost bought a house, and it was a wetland, so we didn't buy the house. So you could check to see if that is. I know someone has thought that before, I think it was back there.
You really, really shouldn't be.
Okay, sorry, but from what I see here, the testimony given, the applicant and the engineer are, I'm sorry, the contractor are trying to fix this problem, and that's most important. I think trying to fix it is better than not doing anything at all. I'm not happy to hear that there's forty trees being removed, but it sounds as if the owner is willing to plant more trees, which I'm glad to hear that as well. And I also hear from the audience as well, the concerned residents, and I feel you, but I think doing something is better than not doing anything at all.
All right, any other comments by members of the board? Mr. Matthew, you look like you wanna make a comment.
Sure, so ultimately, my understanding is, we're just approving the quantity of material with this. I don't know if there's any conditions we need about, to impose about time of activity or anything else beyond the normal township ordinance, I mean, I think the ordinance covers that the work doesn't happen too early or too late, but I know that's usually what we talk about when we, when we talk about soil movement permits.
It's all in the ordinance with regard to not only hours of operation, but also truck routes, things like where the soil's gonna come from, that'll have to be disclosed to our town engineer, so that not importing or removing any soil to inappropriate areas or importing soil that's correct, stuff like that is all governed by the ordinance, and that'll be taken care of by not only our town engineer, but also our police department.
I would just suggest we add a condition that no work activity can begin until after school starts for Noel School. I think it's nearby here.
It is pretty close.
They're not gonna have truck, traffic.
Yeah, the testimony was that they were, well, I guess they're removing some, but the testimony was that they're just moving soil on site.
I believe they're still removing, there's a net reduction off the site.
Yes. You'll keep it during workday hours, after the school is up, has begun, and before it closes, and kids are walking up the street.
I agree.
Okay, any other members of the board have any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dedich?
Real quick, this soil movement is gonna cause a certain number of trees to come down. Should we add a condition so that they should plant same number of trees?
They've already agreed.
Should that be a condition of approval, or that's just an agreement?
Would you like to put in a condition that they work with the township professionals to make sure that...
The forest officer, who are that recommendation, yeah.
An appropriate number of trees added where...
Type and number, yeah.
So, you're basically saying you agree that if we put that in as a condition...
So, we went over everything with Parks and Forestry, we talked about trees that are gonna come down, not come down, and replanting a certain number of trees, and anytime we do that, we use their standards, because their favorite tree changes from time to time. Like, one of the favorite trees is the ones that's getting attacked by those beetles now, so we're not using those type of trees anymore, and whatever they tell me to plant there, we plant there. I don't pick them, he gives me a selection of types of trees I can pick from, I don't dictate that, that Parks and Forestry dictates that.
That sounds reasonable to me, does that work for you?
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, it sounds like no objection, right?
And do we have a quantity to go with that, of trees to be planted?
I think, I gotta have to check, I think it was at twelve?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, and it'll probably be more than that, because he would like to create a buffer along the back as well, with those pine trees.
Makes sense to me. All right, Mr. Danakun, you have to...
Yeah, sure, so, having looked at the existing conditions that have been presented, I can see where the problem is coming from.
Oh, sure.
And it does look as if this is certainly a good faith, if not, you know, having two engineers review this and provide this as a suggestion, and with the experiences we've had on the board, this seems like a reasonable attempt to try and solve the problem, so, you know, I'll be looking at this and definitely giving it my approval.
All right, any other comments? Do I hear a motion to approve the motion to recommend to the council that they approve the soil moving permit?
Mr. Chairman? I move the motion to approve application number 22:510, Dan Tedesco, 179 Noel Road, block 475, lot 2.03, zone R3, major soil moving permit to mitigate drainage issues associated with the construction of a new single-family dwelling.
Second, Mealy. All right, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dedich?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Bunnyken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes. So, there's still lots of time for you to talk to the applicant, and to formulate what you think would be a better plan, if you believe so, but I frankly think this is a good faith effort to resolve the problem, and I think it has a chance of doing it. So, thank you all for coming out, I think it's important that we hear everything, so I appreciate that you've come out and talked to us, all right? And again, the applicant has indicated a willingness to converse with everybody in the neighborhood, so if you have other things that you could help with? So, is there anything else that needs to come before the board tonight?
No.
No, we wanna get to other, the championship game hasn't begun yet. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Any second?
Second, Bunnyken.
Anybody opposed? So let's leave.